This conference will now be recorded.
It's nice to see that we had cats joining us tonight, so that's, that's good. We'll roll right on to, speaking of, of cats. Our first duty this evening is a proclamation. It's my honor to bring this proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. And we're joined by our Director of Parks and Recreation, Justine Spees. So, Justine?
Hello, thank you for being here this evening. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas Parks and Recreation proclaims programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Bonner Springs. And whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs build healthy, active communities to aid in prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation for those who are disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and natural recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community by improving water quality, protecting groundwater, preventing floods, improving the air quality, providing vegetative buffers to development and producing habitats for wildlife. And whereas our Parks and Natural Recreation Areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the city of Bonner Springs recognizes the benefits derived from the Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor, do hereby proclaim that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Bonner Springs in conjunction with the National Parks and Recreation Month. Congratulations. And now I'm going to go ahead and, and hand this down to Justine.
Wow, that worked just right. Thank you, Justine, I know that this is a difficult time for Parks and Recreation with all the limitations due to the virus and all the extra effort that you and your staff are, are doing are certainly greatly appreciated. I know this is not the, the situation any of us would want, but we're, we're certainly doing the best we can, so thank you so much. You are muted.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, any, any news from Parks and Recreation, any exciting?
We have coming up our Oak Ridge Alliance Parks and Rec Month, so staff has been working on creating a calendar of fun activities for the community to participate in. And there will be a posting on Facebook every day in July. Since the theme this year is "We Are Parks and Rec", we are spotlighting our city staff who work in Parks and Recreation. So every Saturday and a few Sundays, we'll be highlighting a couple of key members, full-time staff members, and what all they do for the community as far as Parks and Rec goes.
Great, we'll keep it up, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Going on to, this is an opportunity for citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. This is, um, an opportunity for citizens to convey to city councilmen or the city clerk or city manager or any of the many different ways they can get their voices heard or make it known here this evening about items that they're concerned about that aren't on tonight's agenda. Anyone have anything to bring from the public? Seeing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes the minutes of the June 8, 2020 city council meeting, claims for city operations, and claims for the Public Housing Authority, and as well as public use requests for disc golf tournaments. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Shannon, second. Been moved and seconded, thank you very much. Any thing to be pulled by the staff? Nothing. Anything to be pulled by citizens or council members? Seeing none, questions, concerns, or comments from this council?
Just a quick question. You mentioned about it helps raise funds for the course maintenance, are we getting what, a certain percentage? I don't know if Justine can answer that or not?
We're getting a couple bucks from each person that registers. Five dollars.
Very good, seeing nothing else, vote please.
Yep.
Kip, yes.
Wood?
Wood, yes.
Mackey?
Mackey, yes.
Shannon?
Shannon, yes.
Thompson?
Thompson, yes.
Gurley? Gurley, yes. Stevens?
Stevens, yes.
Reeves?
Reeves, yes.
Mayor, the motion passes.
Very good, on to, since there's no old business, straight on to new business. The first of which is an ordinance to amend the pilot agreement for JAG, J-A-G, Ready Services. Staff?
Hello, Amber McCullough, Assistant City Manager. In November of last year, we had an ordinance that the city approved to issue bonds in an amount up to $2.2 million for the purpose of constructing and equipping a commercial facility for Ready Services. And since then, the company has provided requisitions and documentations of at least $1,672,725 worth of costs. And they anticipate having an additional around $300,000 worth of cost prior to their July 31 completion date. So we've, staff, Q-Tech Rock, and JAG have agreed to set a valuation of $1,978,700 for the pilot payment. And this ordinance that's before you tonight amends that pilot agreement that was originally passed, and then there was an amended and restated pilot agreement attached with the item for your review. We have Adrian Serene from Q-Tech Rock here, if anyone has any questions for Bond Council as well.
Very good, thank you. Anything else from the citizens, not seeing any? I'd go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the pilot agreement for the JAG Ready Services project.
Tom, second.
Got several to pick from there. Christina, you can determine who was first.
Okay, I recorded a motion made by Shannon and a Thompson by sec, but second by Thompson.
Very good, if we could go work our way through by roll call, questions, concerns, and comments from the council, please.
Certainly, Reeves?
It looks like we're saving a quarter of a million dollars, is that right? Or 220 some thousand?
Hi, this is Adrian, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Adrian Serene with Q-Tech Rock, yeah, that, with respect to the principal amount that they, that they had sought, they were looking for an IRV amount of not to exceed $2.2 million principal amount, and they did bring the project in at just under $2 million as their projection shows. So it is gonna, they are saving quite a bit of money, they're gonna be a little under two.
Yeah.
Stevens? Did you catch any of that, Reeves?
I missed it somehow.
Well, it's, you're correct. They are coming in under budget, they had sought a par amount of not to exceed $2.2 million. And they're actually bringing in the project at a little under $2 million, so that, you're correct on that.
Okay, whoops. Hang on. Something's happened here. There, yeah, I, I got that, I just wanted to make sure, that sounds good, I'm glad something's coming in under budget.
Stevens, comments, questions?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, we actually, those bonds haven't actually been issued yet, correct? That'll be, that'll be coming up?
The, the bonds are issued as of 2019, and this is the first year of their abatement. So this is the first year their taxes will be due, they're, they'll be outstanding for the next 10 years, counting this year.
Okay, do they just draw from the bonds what they need then to finish the project? What happens to the difference between the, the bonding amount and what the actual cost was?
Great question. So the, the bonds were issued or authorized to be issued by the city in December of last year in an amount not to exceed $2.2 million. And this is structured as a drawdown bond situation. So the company runs the money through the trustee as they need to. So there, there really won't, there will be some cap room left because they're not using all $2.2 million, but there's not, let's say, $200,000 and change sitting unused somewhere. The company just didn't need to run that amount through the trustee.
Gotcha, so only the amount they actually draw is what they'll be paying back? There won't be this slush fund sitting out there somewhere?
Right, there's, there's no pile of $200,000 somewhere in a bank or, or anywhere else, that, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Kip?
No questions.
Gurley? No questions. Wood?
Wood, no questions.
Thompson?
Thompson, no questions.
Mackey?
No questions, I'm thrilled you guys helped us wrap up our first industrial park.
Shannon?
Shannon, no question.
That's it, Mayor.
Very good, seeing nothing else, vote please.
Mackey?
Mackey, yes.
Stevens?
Stevens, yes.
Wood?
Wood, yes.
Gurley? Gurley, yes. Reeves?
Reeves, yes.
Kip?
Kip, yes.
Thompson?
Thompson, yes.
Shannon?
Shannon, yes.
Okay, Mayor, the motion passes.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations. Moving on to our next item, item number two, curb and sidewalk contract change order request. Staff?
Hi, Frank Abart, Public Works Director. Say I've come before you today for a change order on the project that replaced a lot of sidewalk, curb, and gutter in the city, primarily focused in the downtown area on Oak Street. This was awarded in February to Phoenix Concrete. And the project at this point is substantially complete. It's like 99.5% complete, actually, it's right there. And I come before you with an increased work as a result of this change order in the amount of $52,383.71. This is as a result of a lot of additional work in sidewalks and curb and gutter replacement that we did, primarily focused in that downtown area. Request your approval and like to answer any questions anybody might have about it.
All right, anything else from staff? Seeing none, go ahead Dan, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the change order in the amount of $52,383.71 to Phoenix Concrete for additional curb and gutter repair work.
Mackey, second. Moved and seconded, questions, concerns, comment from the council, roll call please.
Shannon?
Yeah, Frank, this, did this push us over or are we still below, were we still below the, the amount? Where do, where do we stand on this?
Well, we're over the original contract amount and, but we still have funding in that particular road, street budget category. And that's what I'm drawing from. Because essentially, when you go out for bid, okay. Yeah, we're within, we're within budget capacity, we, we don't have to pull from anything else.
Excellent, thank you Frank.
Yep.
Mackey?
Is this approval or questions? This is a question, right?
Questions, questions and comments, okay. Thompson?
Thompson, no comments or questions.
Wood?
Wood, no questions.
Gurley?
Just one comment that I heard from one of the downtown store owners that they didn't receive notice of the construction that was going to be taking place, so caught them off guard. They just want us to be really cognizant of that.
Okay.
Kip?
Kip, I was down there yesterday or the day before, a lot of the work I saw looked very good. So, major improvement in a lot of areas, no questions other than that.
Stevens?
Yeah, Frank, I noticed that two alliance items were probably the main contributors, they added up to about 48,000. Is it just, did we run into just some unexpected, unforeseen issues when replacing that curb and guttering?
Well, it's actually a couple things, so when you go out for bid, you know you only have so much money to spend. In this particular case, we went out to bid at the right time for the right type of work in February, January and February, and we got some really good prices. So, we had capacity, I guess, financial capacity, that we could go ahead and do a little bit more work than we had anticipated. There was a lot of work on, I think it was Second Street, that went on up the hill, the curb and gutter and sidewalks were in really bad shape. But when we had originally put this bid package together, we didn't know for sure whether we could afford to do all that. But once the bids came in, project was awarded, we were able to expand that project to take care of those problems. And that's kinda, that's kinda how those increases happened.
Well, in this particular instance, that's a great answer, I love that answer.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah, I'll stick to it then.
Reeves, comments, questions? You're muted.
Oops. This is gonna take care of some of the problems with the way things were during a heavy rain down there, I suppose, is that right?
Well, I hope that it takes care of a lot of problems. We did run across one unanticipated issue with stormwater runoff, of course, and that was during that really heavy, heavy rain, I don't know, several weeks ago. But I don't think we could have built anything that would have actually carried that capacity. I don't know how many inches we got in a short period of time, but we're actually still working on maybe a, a solution to that one as well. But I haven't got a price back on that yet, so we'll wait and see if we can afford that.
You know, some of the material, I guess, you know, washed down the street. So I guess maybe we need to find out some way to contain that a little bit better then.
Yes, that would have been that loose mulch, that would have been from that really heavy rain that we had. And, you know, that's, that's one of those rains you're not supposed to get very often. But, but we sure got wham. Yeah. I'm not sure if there's a, a different type of mulch we can put in there or not, but that mulch didn't really have a chance to get seeded. Right. With that kind of water, it just kinda floated up and washed away, so.
Maybe as it ages, it won't, and settles in, it won't wash off so bad.
It's, it's actually not supposed to, it's supposed to soak up the water and get heavy, but it, this came so fast, it just floated right away.
And, you know, it'd be nice to have rock in some of those places, but understand, and down there, maybe some businesses don't want rock right outside their windows.
I was just gonna say, in that particular location, that's probably not the best choice of materials. We'd, we'd be out taking that rock out pretty fast, probably.
Yeah.
Mayor, questions, comments? Oh, sorry.
That's all.
Yeah, I do, as long as we recognize with these modifications to an existing streetscape, we've had quite a significant impact on the drainage system. And like you alluded to, there's gonna have to be continued improvements. Yeah, that was a big downpour that caused the mulch to float out of that one, planting box or tree box in front of the barber shop, and left a good amount of that mulch on the sidewalk. However, right across Second Street, the water seems to go right up our new wheelchair-accessible sidewalk access and go right down the sidewalk, right against the buildings. So this is happening in more than just the big gully washers. We have, I have had property owners on each block stop me with their concern. Some of these, you know.
I wasn't aware of that.
These will have to continue to be remediated. I know we spoke about the one in front of the barber shop, the one in front of the building on the, the eastern corner of Oak and Second has a lot of water, and you can see the, the, how the water has run down the sidewalk there, both directions. As well as at, at Third Street, the water coming down the hill from, basically the, the Government Services Center area towards Oak doesn't even make it into these new accesses to the storm drains. So there, there are concerns, we've, we've recognized some, and I would imagine well, there will be more that will become evident. And this is, anytime you have to retrofit an existing older part of the community, it's gonna take continued improvements. On Third Street, I know there's some concerns, but also those go down the whole street, it appears.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't aware that we were running down the sidewalks, so.
Sure are in the 100 block of Oak.
Okay.
Seeing nothing else, no other questions, concerns, comments? Recognizing there'll probably be more additional work on our sidewalks in Bonner Springs, imagine that. I would ask for a vote, please.
Gurley? Gurley, yes. Shannon?
Shannon, yes.
Reeves?
Reeves, yes.
Thompson?
Thompson, yes.
Wood?
Wood, yes.
Mackey?
Mackey, yes.
Stevens?
Stevens, yes.
Kip?
Kip, yes.
Mayor, the motion passes.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you everyone.
Onto item number three, a resolution of support for Nekon Hecon Creek renaming. This is an interesting item that, I don't know if we have any, any of our staff that would like to address it, but I know we have a, a guest person on tonight too, staff?
Amber McCullough, Assistant City Manager. We received a proposal to support the renaming of a Wolf Creek Tributary. There's a six-mile-long unnamed tributary of Wolf Creek, which is through the city of Bonner Springs and Kansas City, Kansas. The Bonner Springs Historic Preservation Society identified the original name of the tributary as Nekon Hecon Creek on an 1870 map of Wyandotte County. I've included the proposal that we received from the U.S. Board of Geographic Names with this item as long, along with a resolution of support to support the renaming of the tributary. It would honor Chief Nekon Hecon, who was a chief of the wolf band of the Delaware Indians, and he is buried 1.4 miles northwest of the head of the stream, which is up in the Delaware Ridge subdivision. I know that the person who turned in this proposal, Mr. Brad Harrington, he is the Vice President of the Bonner Springs Historic Preservation Society, is on tonight. If he has anything to add to that item?
Uh, no, I don't, I, thank you for having me on this evening. And I also would like to say that the Unified Government, it went to their Public Works and Safety Standing Committee today and passed unanimously in their committee. And so the Board of Geographic Names is just looking for support from local opinion, and we would really like your support.
Thank you, thank you all very much. Very, very glad that the historical society has championed this, as long, as well as Brad. And it's honorable for the city of Bonner Springs to pay tribute to our, our origins and our, our history. So I would go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution of support for renaming the current, currently unnamed Wolf Creek Tributary to the Nekon Hecon Creek.
Second, Mackey, second.
You guys are doing great tonight, so thank you very much. I'll go ahead and ask for questions, concerns, comments by roll call.
Reeves?
No comments.
Stevens?
No comments.
Kip?
No comments.
Gurley? No comment. Wood?
I am so glad that history lives.
Thompson?
Thompson, no comments.
Mackey?
I had two questions for Brad, or actually, I think, one question, one comment. Brad, are you still on?
Yes.
Would you happen to know if there is a commemorative marker for Nekon Hecon? Like, would that happen to be the, where the tower's at? Because I, I've been up in that area, my sister lives almost right where he's buried. So I'm curious if they moved it or if it's marked?
Yes, there's a, a reproduction of his headstone that's there at his grave. And when the developers were, were developing that area, they gave one lot to the Delaware Tribe. And so it's, I could look it up on the map and tell you exactly where it's at. But it's, it's got its own lot, and so they have it fenced off, the actual grave itself. Now, the original stone was damaged, and it's at the museum, but his actual grave site has a reproduction headstone. Then, after all of this gets approved, hopefully, then we will see about having the actual creek named or signage made for the creek as well.
Ah, cool. I also, I wanted to thank you, as I was going through this, this weekend, I thought it was really crazy, pretty cool that you pulled up this map. And I've been doing a bunch of Masonic research since we used to have a lodge in Bonner. And there was surprisingly quite a few worshipful masters on your map. I thought it was a really cool thing that I obviously don't see on maps anymore, and, you know, I could pull it up in Wyandotte County. But where did you find that map, if I may ask?
That map, I believe I found it at the Wyandotte County Museum. I believe there's also now a copy of it at the Bonner Springs Museum. And there was also a copy of it, I believe, at the Leavenworth County Museum. But yeah, it, I, I believe there's one in the map room there at the Bonner Library now.
Cool, well, thank you for all that work, that was quite the extensive report.
Well, I appreciate it, it was really. Well, I appreciate it. It was really neat. I really enjoy looking at the old maps and seeing the old names as well.
Me, too. Thank you, sir.
Shannon, comments, questions?
Shannon, no comments.
Mayor?
No comments. Just would like to ask for a vote, please.
Stevens?
Stevens, yes.
Mackey?
Mackey, yes.
Shannon?
Shannon, yes.
Reeves?
Reeves, yes.
Wood?
Wood, yes.
Thompson?
Thompson, yes.
Gurley?
Gurley, yes.
Kip?
Kip, yes.
Mayor, motion passes.
Very good. Congratulations. Thank you to the Historical Society and to you, Brad. Onto our city managers' report.
I think, Mr. Mayor, just really quickly, wanted to note that the city did submit for several different grants that are available through the Mid-American Regional Council, or Mark, as it's commonly referred to. Two of those are for STP funds. We did apply for this program about two years ago. It's on a rotating basis. Every couple of years they reopen. But that is for one hundred and thirty-eighth Street, Phase One. We also applied for funding, funding under the Tiblo Transit flag. As, as I think we all know, when the city moved out of its former city hall space, the buses were actually moved down to Public Works, as well as some of the staff are working out of that location. If you recall, as part of the K thirty-two multimodal, or Tri-City Multimodal Redevelopment Plan, short K thirty-two plan, the idea of a multimodal facility came up, situated downtown. So we are pursuing some level of funding to help with that. These programs, there's anywhere in the neighborhood of about eighty percent is typically what the application is at for actual grant funds being received. So this is a very competitive process across the metro area. This is the first step, obviously, is applying. So there is a lot more to come. That alludes to the, the third item that we submitted for, which is a transportation alternative program. So this, again, comes out of a master plan that we did for Parks and Rec and a few other endeavors as well. But notably, the, the big push, especially right now, is trying to get outside and recreate on trails and sidewalks, as the mayor alluded to. We certainly have a lot of sidewalks that are needing to be repaired here in town, as well as just filling in gaps where some exist. One place, then you might go a block without them, and then they, they resume. The biggest issue with that is we just don't really have a good plan for that, or disconnected trails and similar types of things. Basically, alternative transportation to the car is what it amounts to. I allude to that one just because there is, this is a PSPP program, or Planning Sustainable Places. This does come with a little bit of public input to it at this juncture. So we will be sending out some information related to this program, this specific project, and then ultimately allowing public comment regarding anybody's feelings towards that type of endeavor. So again, look for that and please participate in that. That's obviously a good thing to continue to show the public support for this. Again, this is, this is being crafted with a lot of other plans that we've already done. And this, this final, I would call, plan is more of an implementation plan of how do we, how do we assess things, actually going through and getting that, the sidewalks, trails inventoried, and then putting together an actual phase plan to get, to get some things accomplished here. So that is, that's something that, again, is important and information we shared here shortly. Next thing really quickly is, if you've been following along at the very beginning of the COVID-nineteen concerns, at least at the federal legislature level, the CARES Act provided funding for cities if they were in excess of a certain population, but they were ultimately distributed to the states. The state of Kansas started what was called the Spark Committee. That committee was responsible for determining how to distribute funds to cities other than, or rather, local governments, other than Johnson County and Sedgwick County were the only two that directly qualified due to their higher populations than the rest of the state. So that means that Wyandotte County is actually going to be distributing, I believe it's around forty million dollars, or at least they have access, rather, to forty million dollars. That is in front of their standing committee this evening, as far as the process to go through. So again, this does provide some relief to the city by way of allowing for reimbursement of any expenses related to managing COVID-nineteen or ultimately, you know, PPE supplies, things like that. So again, this is a, a little bit of a, a relief on an already strapped budget for, for everybody. But again, just some information regarding that. And that, again, is in front of the, I believe it's the full commission tonight. It might be one of their committees. So again, look for more information related to that. And then lastly, we talked about this, I believe, earlier this month or the month prior. But we are starting to get to the point where we are having city meetings resume in person. The Planning Commission did hold their first in-person meeting last, last week with the announcement of Phase Three being extended. We did hold off on resumption of the city meetings, or at least the city council meetings. I did just want to bring up for consideration by the council, resuming city council meetings in person, starting with the July meeting. Again, we would just to kind of rehash what, what we did with Planning Commission. We did do a lot of, of social distancing, ensuring that people were spaced appropriately. So that did limit a little bit of the capacity for folks to get in. But ultimately, we didn't go over the amount of, or the limit that we had imposed because of square feet. Also handed out face masks, things like that for folks that they didn't have one. Again, typical things that folks are doing, but ultimately, I did want to solicit your guys' input into that. Just keeping in mind that the next city council meeting isn't until, I believe it's the thirteenth of July. So we do have a good chunk of time here. And assuming that there aren't any continual issues with COVID-nineteen or regression as far as the phasing is concerned. But again, I'd look for any input from the council related to that. Now we're offline as well. But again, I, I think we are getting a lot of questions about when, when city council resume in-person meetings. So again, if anybody has any input, please, please share that with me or Chris, and we can try to get that taken care of before our next. Other than that, I have nothing else to report. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Sean. We'll move on into city council items. We'll do that also by roll call, please. Christina?
Shannon?
No questions or comments?
Mackey?
I was going to mention that I was endorsed by the Kansas Federation of Life today. It's not entirely council, but it's related to me running for Bonner. That's all my major mentions.
Thompson?
Thompson, no comments.
Wood?
Wood, no comments.
Gurley?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Kip?
Kip, no comments.
Stevens?
Yeah, I'm surprised nobody offered Sean any input on, on, on starting in-person meetings. Yeah, I think as long as we follow some good safe guidelines, I, I'm ready to get back to, to seeing everybody in person. And then quickly on your report about the Planning Commission vacancy, do you have a name that you can share with us that is leaving? Or is that not appropriate at this time?
Oh, no, it's, I think it's fine to share. Jason Crone is actually stepping down from the commission. I can't recall when his, his last day is through July. Yeah. But I know he's, he's stated that he's, he's willing to stay on until such time as we do find a replacement, assuming that it doesn't drag out for, for a significant amount of time, I assume. So.
Thank you. No more questions.
Reeves?
You're muted.
Thanks to Mark Stites for all the work he's been doing with his job with the city, with going around reviewing properties. That's all.
Mayor, your turn.
Very good. Thank you all for your inputs tonight. And yes, I, it is important that we get back to in-person meetings. And we, I'm sure we can do that safely. I, I would hope that we would be able to accommodate some type of hybrid meeting in the, in the reinstituting these meetings, that if anyone felt the need to protect themselves or their family, be able to join online and make some kind of hybrid virtual and in-person meeting. I don't know all the particulars with that, but also have some ability for the public to make comment, both virtually and in person. So all those things we'll be working through. Hopefully, we'll be able to soon. Other than that, also, kind of along the same lines, I know City Band is wanting to get back and hopefully function in, in July. And we're hoping to help them with making those considerations. We're talking with them. I'd also like to recognize the police department and how proud I am of them. They supported a, a young man's birthday party. And I saw that on social media. And I was just so, so impressed with how, how appropriate that was at the time and the timing of that. It's, makes a big difference to a, a family and a young man to have that kind of participation. So I'm sure the police department recognizes how valuable that is. And I just want them to know that, that we recognize that, too. Unless anyone has any questions for me, I stand.
One more comment.
Yes, sir.
With going back to the meetings, I think what you had a good idea there in case somebody feels that they might need to somehow quarantine themselves for a while because of some, some groups they've been in, it might be a good idea to, to do that on an individual basis, if possible, like you were mentioning, I think, that, you know.
Very good. We'll see how that can best be accommodated.
Yeah. I'm not planning on that, but I'm just saying in case somebody needs that.
Yeah, very good. All right. Seeing nothing, nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.